Well, good morning and welcome to City Hall. We're going to get started with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Joe Alsay is the Reverend at St. Augustine of Centerbury Episcopal Church. Fast-growing church on the north side. He's going to lead us in the invocation. If you come on up. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Shadid if he'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. But would everyone please stand?
Let us pray. The God of justice and mercy, in whose name the founders of this country won liberty for themselves and for us. As we conclude our celebrations of 240 years as a country and look to the dawning of a new day, we give you thanks for the gifts of life and liberty, the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Help Mick, our mayor, and all elected officials to act with character and conviction. Help them to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help them to speak with charity and restraint. Most of all, give all of our citizens a spirit of service. Remind us that we are all stewards of your authority. Guide and help us to raise up the torch of freedom, that we may be righteous leaders of your people's needs. Help us to see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us, and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. And finally, great God of all, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of the human person. We ask this as your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness and love. And all of God's children said, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, it is July and a good chance for us to draw some positive attention to our Parks and Recreation Department. We're going to start with the fact that it is Parks and Recreation Month. And so I'll ask the following to come forward. Kelly Hadshaw, John Siska, Donna Gatewood, Pat Shaper, Embria Glenn, Mikelia Eddy, Wayne Kidder. Doug, you want to come up too? Doug Cooper runs our Park and Recreation Department. We have a proclamation. I'll ask the clerk to read it as we get settled up here.
Whereas July is National Park and Recreation Month, and parks and recreation programs are a vital part of communities across America, including Oklahoma City. Whereas the Oklahoma City Parks and Recreation Department provides green spaces and dynamic facilities and programs, so citizens can obtain a high quality of life, contributing to the overall well-being of the community, its economy, and culture. Parks and Recreation Programs provide recreational exercise and wellness opportunities to aid citizens with disease prevention by encouraging healthy habits and exercise, improving the overall well-being of citizens. Whereas Parks and Recreation Programs contribute to economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, attraction, and retention of businesses and employees, and crime reduction. Whereas Parks and Recreation Lands contribute positively to the environment by improving air and water quality, protecting groundwater, providing vegetative buffers, and producing sustainable habitat for wildlife. Whereas our Parks and Recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community, allowing children and adults to connect with nature through primitive and manicured landscapes. Whereas Oklahoma City recognizes the invaluable contributions of employees and volunteers who help people relax, connect with others, and enjoy the many benefits of Parks and Recreation Programs and facilities. Now therefore Mick Cornett, the mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the month of July 2016 as Park and Recreation Month in Oklahoma City.
Let's show our appreciation for the people that run our Parks Department. And Doug, it just seems to get bigger and better every year. I don't know how you all do it.
It's thanks to you and the council supporting us and making the city as great as it is for us to be able to do what we're doing. What I'd like to do is feature one of our unsung divisions. These folks are all from the Civic Center, and they are the ones that produce all of the great shows. They're the ones that helped put those great shows on at the Civic Center. And we're so proud of the work that they do on a daily basis for our quality of life. And I couldn't be prouder of the folks that are standing here with me from the Civic Center. I also have representatives from the Recreation Division in the audience. We are here for the people, and we are producing some great quality activities throughout the city, but the feature is the Civic Center. I just want you to know how proud of these folks I am and what they do on a daily basis to have great shows at the Civic Center.
Thank you for letting us honor them as well. Let's show our appreciation one more time. Thanks. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thanks for the tribute. Thank you. And continuing our theme with the Parks Department, we are here to honor our Employee of the Month. Now, you can imagine in a city of over 4,000 employees, selecting one is not only a difficult challenge, but it also should raise the attention of just how important and what a large honor this is. So I'll ask Doug Paulson to come forward. Doug, would you come up? Let's show our appreciation, Doug, our Employee of the Month for the City of Oklahoma City. We have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas Doug Paulson has been a city employee for 21 years and is the Woodson Park Senior Center Supervisor for the Parks and Recreation Department. Whereas Doug is responsible for developing and implementing programs and activities for the Woodson Senior Center participants, varying from cooking classes to dancing and fitness. Whereas Doug has been the supervisor of Woodson Senior Center since it opened, and he has created great relationships with both his staff and residents who attend the center. Doug cares about their well-being, and his leadership enhances the lives of the senior residents. Whereas Doug, in addition to being the face of the senior center, consistently handles the business side of his position with ease, and has taken the time to teach a staff how to maintain the center so that he can assist other centers when needed. Whereas Doug served as the interim field operations supervisor while Veronica Tracy was out on maternity leave, he stepped up without hesitation and handled both his positions with grace. Whereas Doug led a wellness initiative grant where senior residents learned about healthy eating and lifestyle habits. Thanks to Doug's thinking outside the box, senior residents were able to experience fun and unique ways to eat healthy and local. Whereas this council desires to recognize Doug Paulson for his dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the residents of the City of Oklahoma City. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Doug Paulson, July 2016, South Oklahoma City Quanis Club Employee of the Month.
And let's show our appreciation and acknowledge his tremendous honor.
Thank you. I've got to do this for 20-something years, and I get a lot of support from these guys to serve the people out there, and I really do enjoy it. Yeah, it's a center that's 55 and above. I know when we started, we wanted a different idea of senior centers. It wasn't just kind of a place people came and played dominoes all day, which they do, but they also paint, and we have Tai Chi and yoga going on this morning. We have dance classes. We have luncheons. So it's kind of a social gathering place, as well as a, you know, we think of it almost a prevention place where people creatively, physically can take care of themselves and enjoy themselves.
How many people?
I think our last monthly was like 1,500 a month, 1,500 participants for that month. Yeah.
Let's show our appreciation one more time. Thanks.
Mayor, continuing on the discussion about the parks, we got to watch our grandchildren this weekend, and so we utilized the bicentennial parks and their fountains quite a bit Saturday, and then over to the myriad gardens and utilized their water activities. Then we were up at Stars and Stripes Park, and then finally yesterday at Early Wine for the family picnic. And I'll say this, our park systems are just tremendous, and they offer such a great opportunity at no cost or very little cost if you need to reserve a particular area. But I think our park system has done just a tremendous job, and I would encourage everybody to utilize them whenever possible.
Nice remarks, David. I appreciate it. I gave Doug his resolution without us voting on it, so either we pass this or we're going to have to go get it back from him. So how about a motion? All right, cast your votes. Now, thank goodness, it passes unanimously. Would have been embarrassing. All right, item four is the Journal of Council Proceedings. Four A is to receive the journal for June 21st, and four B is to approve the journal for June 14th. Is there a motion? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And item five is request for uncontested continuances.
Just a few this morning, starting on page 32. Item 9E1, page 32, item F, 6605 Northwest 12th Street. We asked that be stricken. The owner has removed. Moving to page 33, under item 9G1, item D, 5001 Gaines Street. We asked that be stricken. The owner secured. Item E, 2335 West Park. We asked that be stricken. The owner secured. Item I, 6709 Northwest 10th Street. We asked that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item L, 6135 Northwest 19th Street. We asked that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item O, 315 Northwest 26th Street. We asked that be stricken. The owner secured. And item P, 4009 Southeast 45th Street. We asked that be stricken. The owner has secured. And then moving to item on page 34, item 9H1. Item E, 5001 Gaines Street. We asked that be stricken. Owner secured. Item F, 2335 West Park. We asked that be stricken. The owner secured. Item J, 6709 Northwest 10th Street. We asked that be stricken. The owner secured. Item L, 6135 Northwest 19th Street. Asked that be stricken. The owner secured. Item N, 315 Northwest 26th Street. Asked that be stricken. The owner secured. And finally, item O, 4009 Southeast 45th Street. We asked that be stricken. And again, the owner secured.
Any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right, we'll recess the council meeting, convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. Looks like there are seven items here on the MFA. Any comments or questions? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC MFA, convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. Just four items here.
Just a quick question on the upgrades on the sound system. Is that for concerts and things, Jim? Or typically people bring in their own sound for those kinds of things?
Well, it's the general building sound system. Now, some concerts bring in their own sound systems, but the building has a sound system for most general events.
Okay.
And it's stated.
All right, is there a motion? Cast your votes on the PPA. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC PPA, convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. Four items today. Comments or questions here? Motion? Cast your votes, and the EAT passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket. All right, are there any individual considerations? Ed?
A, N, like Nancy, B, S, and B, W.
Pete? A, B. All right.
And Mayor, 7A, 7E, and 7AD.
All right, Ed, why don't you get started with A, N?
Doug? Maybe Doug can find a problem. Doug, I'll come back. Military Park. Yes, I just, just pointing out, this is six, almost $7 million to the CDB Convention Tourism and Visitation Promotion, and then about 1.1 million of that is just basically, you know, the business has gotten so competitive in terms of space being built out, and you have to give incentives. So many committees.
Ed, can you get your mic? Which one are you on? I'm so sorry.
BS. Thank you. It's kind of uncanny how staff gets certain things under that heading. But, so 1.1 million is just kind of incentives, and I just want to pivot back to this in a couple of months. I'm sure we're going to talk about the Convention Center Hotel and probably large subsidies to try and attract that business. We promised, I think, two things during the MAPS 3 campaign, that we would build a convention center for 250 million, and that we would triple our convention center business as a result of the project. I just want to point out that the study that was done by the Chamber seven years ago that hasn't been released to the public indicated that while this is a sizable amount, 6.7 million, it's not nearly large enough to compete in today's environment to try and triple your convention center business. And that was, that study was seven years ago, but if anything, things have gotten more competitive. It requires more incentives to get that kind of business. So just pointing out that this is 6.7 million, and we'll pivot back to this, I guess, in a couple of months when we talk about a convention center hotel. Is Doug, did Doug come in yet? So Doug, on A, N, on Military Park, I always thought we were, it was going to be about 800, 850,000.
Well, there's always the contingencies that are held back, and then, of course, all the admin fees. So about 25% off of the GEO allotted money is held back for other activities other than the construction side of things, the design and that sort of thing.
So that's not included in this 629,000?
That's just strictly the construction money.
Got it. Okay, great, thank you. And then the statue and things will be on top of that.
The Vietnamese community actually deposited $50,000 a week or so ago with us to start the process for the design of the art piece or the actual memorial. So they're well on their way to bring it all together.
Great, thank you. And finally, BW is an incentive of $500,000 to the National Litigation Law Group. This is out of the GOLT funds that we passed as part of the bond in 2007. I've been critical of these in the past. I'm critical of this one. It's, I just, I find it, I find it a stretch, some of the language that's in the report that they have a headquarters in Oklahoma City, they have offices in New York, San Francisco, Washington, and this 500,000 is going to allow them to keep their headquarters here and expand these jobs here. I think that just the difference in real estate prices over, say, 10, 20 years, whether you buy it or lease it, I think would far exceed that amount. I just, I just don't, I don't think this is a good expenditure, a use of 500,000 dollars. So that, that's consistent with things in the past, but I think going forward, I mean, we're just nine months away from trying to have the outline of our next GEO bond. Roy Williams has indicated he wants to continue to have a fund like this as part of the GEO bond. It just seems like it's time to start having that conversation. Are we going to continue to have a large fund that has given out, for me, corporate welfare? But is it, is it going to be 75 million again? Is it going to be, have the same parameters where it has to average 45, 50,000 dollars a year to qualify for it? To me, we passed, that vote of the people was about 10 years ago, and we've only used about maybe two-thirds of the fund. That to me is, I mean, that's the initial argument against having a fund that size. How much?
It's almost all gone. There's very, how many, how much is left? Less than 5 million?
We've allocated about 65 million dollars of the 75 million.
Okay.
For the creation of about 11,500 jobs.
That, okay, and we could debate about whether they would have happened anyway. So you've used 65 million in 10 years. It took 10 years. The bulk of that was in one deal on the Tinker Air Force Base. I mean, without the Tinker Air Force Base, that was about half of it right there. I think the, I would just ask the council to consider that when you have a large pool of funds, it does make you kind of a target. I mean, some people feel like maybe we overpaid for the Tinker Air Force Base, that maybe when the railroad sees that large pool of funds, they go after it, the way maybe a lawyer might go after someone with a large insurance policy. You have that large pool of funds, and it makes you more, makes it more tempting for somebody to go after it. Maybe if that pool of money was a little bit smaller, you just tell the railroad, well, we don't, we don't have 30, 35 million. So here, I don't believe that we're getting anything for this 500,000 dollars. And so I think we should look at everything that we've, that we've done with this pool of money. 7 million dollars to Continental Energy, 3 million to Chesapeake, on and on and on, and figure out in retrospect with 2020 hindsight vision, what we got for that 75 million, and do we want it to be that big next time? But it seems like the time for that conversation is now. That's a vote that will be separately. I mean, the people will vote yes or no just on that economic incentive. It won't be log-rolled with parks or streets or anything else. It'll just be up and down, just the people voting just on that separately, so.
Could I just make a quick comment about the BNSF Railroad? My recollection is it took us, it took two years to negotiate that deal. It came down to the last day whether or not there were actually sufficient funds to purchase that. And I think the Air Force will tell you that that's one of the best transactions that's ever happened. It not only helped create new jobs out there, it saved 35,000, 35,000 jobs in this community that are incredibly highly paid and protected Tinker for years to come into the future. I think that's probably one of the best uses of these dollars that we've ever been able to impact our community with.
No question about that. I just wonder if we hadn't had that pool of funds, if the money would have, if the money would have come from the state instead of us.
Some of the money did come from the state.
Right, but maybe all of it come from the state instead of us.
Ed, not to get into a discussion now, but just a counter perspective on that is if an opportunity should present itself two years, three years, five years from now, having a pool of funds available, I'm talking about a very significant, you know, new industry coming into Oklahoma City, and to say, gosh, we could have gotten that had we had the funds to make an offer similar to what the other municipalities are offering. You'd hate to have that very significant kind of game-changing opportunity pass you by just because of lack of funding, so.
So David, maybe you could tailor the next one to say something like that, that the funds are for, you know, an opportunity like you're describing, as opposed to 500,000 to a law group who probably is, I mean, is in my mind almost certainly going to do this anyway.
Yeah.
Maybe the parameters to qualify for the funds are different next time.
Yeah, and I think it, and I know we've got a committee already in place, but I do think it's worthwhile to look at it, you know, in depth and really analyze it, but look at it from all sides of it. Not solely as, quote, corporate welfare, but it allows us to be in a more competitive position when opportunities do present themselves to us. So I agree, let's look into it and really study it, but look at it from all sides. Thank you.
Yeah, just by way of recollection, Jim, help me out if I could. When the 2007 bond program was voted on by the people, was not an individually listed project, the 75 million dollars for economic development like we're talking about here? Yes. And what was the vote? The people voted on that?
75, 80% maybe?
So just for you voters out there, you did vote on this, and you did approve this. Now, that being said, this particular item right here deals with creation of some jobs that will go into the now unused portion of the shopping center over there. Brent, would you come up and just give a brief review of what these jobs are? And this is just the approval to negotiate a contract, but when you know, when you hear the way the contract will be put together, I think you'll have an entirely different view of what this money is for.
This is for the creation of 500 jobs over a five-year period. It'll be performance-based, it'll be paid out as these jobs are created and they meet the average wage threshold, and it's what we've typically done on all of our other projects.
And these jobs, we have used this money from the GOLT system, we've used it to incentivize Boeing in the past for jobs up in the high $90,000 range, correct?
That's correct.
But this is reaching a different part of our marketplace for people who need jobs. What's the kind of the target market for the people who will be hired as a result of this?
The target market will be anywhere from somebody that just graduated from high school that's looking for an entry-level job, to those who have just finished their Juris Doctorate and have become attorneys. So it's a, it's a broad range. The average jobs, the average salary is approximately $48,000 for these jobs.
Thank you, sir.
Can you, can you kind of outline the process of how we determine whether or not these, like how we conclude that this incentive is actually moving these jobs here, and that they're not going to create them anyway?
We, we have a contract with the Chamber, and they actually go out and do the marketing of this program, and they work with companies. Companies submit an application to the Chamber. The Chamber consults with staff to evaluate it. They, we run it through an economic impact model that determines the overall impact of what those jobs do to our economy, and from there we make a recommendation, and then they either accept it or not. And then the first step is to come to the Economic Development Trust to get approval, to authorize the allocation of the funds, and to authorize us to negotiate a contract with them.
Yeah, I mean, because I don't doubt in the least that 500 new jobs is going to be beneficial to our economy. It's just, I just know it has to be really extremely difficult to determine whether or not they were going to be created anyway.
That is correct.
Can I ask you, Brent, because I'm not, I mean, that vote was in the middle of a horrible ice storm. I think only 6,000 people voted, so I'm not sure that everybody understands how this works. This, this money is borrowed, right? Against our property tax, the property taxpayers, we borrow the money, we give the incentives, we pay off these GOLT bonds with borrowed money off of our property tax. And if the money, if you didn't have a 75 million dollars for this, would you be able to use that 75 million for other things like streets, parks? Could you potentially put it into your other packages that go onto the GEO bond, like parks, streets, transit? In other words, it's not a zero-sum game. I mean, this 75 million is being taken from something else, and you're having a vote on.
I mean, I think we know that there's X amount of money based upon the authorization, based upon the length of the authorization and the millions that's out there. And yes, those could be allocated differently.
I just, I just want the people to understand that, that this is, you have a choice. You can either, you know, put however many millions into these kind of economic development packages, or it can go into your neighborhoods and city infrastructure. So you have to make that choice first, and then you have to decide how big you want it to be, and if you want it to be like the last one, or a different one. But ultimately, it'll be the people that decide this, up or down, just on this alone, not packaged with anything else. Thanks.
Pete, A, B?
Yeah, let me, I have one comment on this. I think the key to this question that Ed's raised is one of transparency. Historically, we've used GEO bonds to finance streets, parks, those kinds of infrastructure things. This time, we used it to finance something totally different, and I think it's, it should stand alone. I think the public ought to have an opportunity to vote on it separately, because do you want your street paved? If you do, you got to put 75 million in a pot for economic If you do, you got to put 75 million in a pot for economic development. I'm not saying there's anything wrong with it, I'm saying it's not the same as what we've always done before. Historically, GO bonds have been for, for a different kind of function. They've been streets, sidewalks, that kind of thing, parks. Meg, you have a surprised look on your face.
Because I think this was just the same. It was an individual proposition, just like, streets was a proposition, parks was a proposition, and the gold bond was a proposition. It stood on its own.
It was a separate.
It was a separate proposition.
Yeah.
So I'm confused.
I'm sorry, I'm wrong. That's the first time I've ever been wrong.
Maybe the first time I've been right about any question.
I'm sorry, that's, okay, all right. On A.D., let me, let me tell you what my concern about A.D. is. It is an allocation of $160,000 to various activities. 1/3 of the people in this city live south of the river. Only 15% of this money is allocated for activities south of the river. I think things happen the way, I think all you have to do is follow the money to see what goes on. If you want something to go on in South Oklahoma City, you spend money in South Oklahoma City. If you don't care, then you throw it a sop, and then you go, and you, and you spend the money someplace else. That's one thing I'm, I'm very pleased about, the Wheeler development. I'm not sure, as I look at it, I'm not sure that it, that it's not very risky, but on the other hand, somebody's got the courage to do something in South Oklahoma City. You know, it took a, an act of Congress to get some, literally, virtually, not quite an act of Congress, but to get the Neighborhood Alliance to recognize there was something south of the river. We had to add money to their funding in order to get somebody to go south of the river. It wasn't the North Oklahoma City Neighborhood Alliance, it was the Neighborhood Alliance. But we had to put more money into it to get somebody to work South Oklahoma City. I think that's happened, I think that's very positive. The person doing it's here today, I think she's doing a great job, but why, I, I just don't understand why it always has to come down to this. I've represented South Oklahoma City most of my adult life, and I've tried to avoid these north-south arguments because I don't think they're productive. But when I see something that's flagrant, there's $25,000 being spent on one entity in South Oklahoma City, and the balance of the 160 being spent north of the river, I can't help but comment on it. There are needs in South Oklahoma City that are just as great, and I think if it was 50/50, I'd, I would listen to somebody telling me that it's out of balance, but it's not out of balance. 15% of the money, less than half of the funding in this, for, for, in this category, less than half of the funding that should be done if it was to be done equally based on population is happening. And I, I just want to point that out as we go forward. I think we kick, that prejudice, that bias, that north-south garbage that we all have to put up with, there's some basis for it. When you see things like this, you got to wonder. You know, when I look at these neighborhoods that were selected for the neighborhood, some of those neighborhoods are doing great, but they're all North Oklahoma City, they're not one of them South Oklahoma City. I think it's time we, we look at things in a better balance.
All right, Larry?
From a historical perspective, when I took over in council, there were two organizations that were supporting neighborhoods in Oklahoma City. One was Neighborhood Alliance, and Georgie Rasko is here representing that. Another was a neighborhood organization, same as Neighborhood Alliance, called the Council of Neighborhoods. And it went on for a number of years, and we worked with that, but there was not the cohesiveness, and not the emphasis, and not the ability evidently to carry that forward. And now Georgie and Neighborhood Alliance is coming along and trying to fill that vacuum. In the meantime, one of the neighborhoods south of the river, called River Park, was supported by Neighborhood Alliance and by this council. That won a national award. It involved getting support from organizations like Dell. It's got new streets and new sidewalks right now, and so a lot of what happens in a neighborhood is not dependent on what we do at the horseshoe right here, but what the neighbors do deciding that it's time to take up the shovel and the pick, if you will, and get to work. And Georgie's organization has been very, very helpful in that. In fact, this morning before council, I called her up and asked her, had she received a call from a neighborhood, again, south of the river? And she said yes, and she's already turned that over to one of her staff members to help reorganize a neighborhood association that has died on the vine. So I think it's more of what the neighbors want and what the neighbors are willing to do, and then Georgie's organization and this council has proven in the past, to me anyway, that we will support it 100%. Thank you, Your Honor.
Let me say something. That's just the most revisionist version I've ever heard in my life.
The Council of Neighborhoods never got a dime out of this organization, from us, not a dime. It was formed because the Neighborhood Alliance wasn't working in South Oklahoma City. The idea that they were competitive at one point, one of them was funded, the other one wasn't funded. I mean, that's ridiculous. That is, that's revisionist beyond description. I'm not criticizing what Neighborhood Alliance is doing now, they're doing a great job in South Oklahoma City now. They hired somebody that fits, that works hard, shows up. I'm, I'm pleased with that. But the idea that we had to put extra money into them to get them to go service a third of the city is troubles me a little bit, still, still sticks in my craw, but, but I'm, I'm pleased at what's going on now. I'm happy about it. They couldn't have hired somebody better that fits the community better, that works harder. But all, what I'm saying is, when 15% of the money goes to neighborhoods north of Oklahoma City, that ought to wake us up a little bit about why we have problems in certain areas. You, just, that's all I'm saying. I'm not being critical of what's going on, other than the fact where you allocate your money is where you see results. You, you, you know, I, I, I've said enough.
All right. Are, are these the only neighborhood groups that, that get city funding, or are we going to vote on other ones at some other time? Because I, because I know that sometimes not all of them are on here, we do it periodically throughout the year, but.
I was going to talk about this too, but I, I think that these are mostly the organized commercial revitalization programs that go through our Social Services Committee. We have funded Law 29, which is the 29th Street Business Improvement District, and are continuing to help try to organize that into a commercial revitalization area, as is Old Capitol Hill. So we are working, it just takes, I mean, I think the importance of having the Neighborhood Alliance down there is that Anna's doing such a great job getting these neighborhoods organized to a place where they can make an application to our commercial revitalization district program, so that they receive this kind of funding to help with the professional development. I mean, this is a combination of a group of paid staff that do a fantastic job, and tons of volunteers that work in their neighborhoods to revitalize small commercial strips surrounded by neighborhoods that has that ripple effect, both on the street and in the surrounding neighborhoods.
One more comment. I understand that working in South Oklahoma City is difficult. I grew up in South Oklahoma City, I've lived there all my life, understand the difference. For example, I never knew the addition that I grew up in, that I grew up in. I never, I don't know the name of the addition today, but if you grew up in Mesta Park, you knew the name of the addition. If you grew up in Crown Heights, you knew the name of the addition. They were cohesive units. South Oklahoma City was a community, it wasn't a neighborhood. It was a giant community, from the river to 134th and Western, where Capitol Hill Baptist Church is, was a community. And it's harder to work in that setting than it is to work in a setting where neighborhoods have always organized around some name that they've always had. They've always been Lyerwood, or they've been Mesta Park, or they've been Crown Heights, or they've been what all these neighborhoods are. That's not an excuse for a misallocation of resources, for an unfair distribution of resources. Just because it's hard doesn't mean you shouldn't be putting our, our resources there. That's my, that's my point. It is harder, I will tell you it's harder. I've said, I've talked to Anna time after time about, I'm not 100% sure you can organize South Oklahoma City around neighborhoods. My hope is you can organize them around schools, about, around grade schools, because the neighborhoods are just not cohesive enough as neighborhoods in terms of boundaries, housing, stock, all that stuff that, that it takes for a neighborhood to be cohesive like Crown Heights is, for example. I, so I'm hoping we can do it around schools, and it's much harder. It's much harder. The schools no longer look like the older neighbors in the neighborhoods, so it's harder. But that's no, that's not an excuse for not, for an unfair allocation of resources.
Meg, you want to jump in on your items?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask a quick question on 7A. It just made me think about an issue I'm concerned about. This is to purchase some wireless equipment to interface with portable traffic signals, and I'm really concerned about the Boathouse District and the crossing between the Chesapeake Boathouse and the rest of the boathouses now, particularly as traffic comes north across that bridge, and it's got a big high rise on it, and then traffic drops down. People that are traveling and traversing back and through the Boathouse District don't realize that there's fast traffic coming across that bridge, and I think with the increased activity, we really have a possibility of a serious issue. And so I just think we ought to look at maybe during events, have some portable signals or something that can sit at that crossing, so. And the other question I wanted to ask was also about funding. Item 7E provides $39,000, almost $40,000 to the YWCA's domestic violence program. Is this all the money that we provide, or I didn't know if we had federal pass-through grants that would come through the police department or otherwise? I see at least one officer here in the audience, but.
Johnny, do you know the answer to that?
I think so. Well, I'm not sure if that's all the funding, but obviously we have, like today, the VOCA grant, that's on the docket today, that will also be focused for domestic violence as well.
Okay, I just.
But I think YMCA may have an opportunity to get their own grants.
All right.
Outside of our.
So I was just hoping that we could offer whatever assistance we can and whatever else is available. They've greatly expanded their capacity, as we know, to house more women and children in distress and.
And we partner with them, like in this domestic violence grant that's on the agenda today, we'll be partnering with them to try and make an impact.
Perfect, great, thank you.
All right, and Georgie Rasko has signed up to speak today. Georgie, come on up. Morning, Georgie.
Good morning, thank you very much.
We'll, we'll need your name and address for the record.
Georgie Rasko, 2206 Northwest 17th Street, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. It was a great conversation earlier today, and one that we're having our office almost on a daily basis, but I do want to disagree with a few things that were said. When I was first hired 13 years ago at Neighborhood Alliance, we had enough money in our budget to last for about six months, and I needed to do something if I wanted to stay employed after that. So at that point, our, we did work closely with the Council of Neighborhoods on South Side, and they did get the exact same city money that I got. They were funded by the city, and all, both, all of us were possibilities. South Oklahoma City and Neighborhood Alliance were all three applying for the same pot of money. Possibilities fell out of it, decided it wasn't for them anymore, the, the way it was going, but South Oklahoma City continued for at least four or five years until their, their management system just didn't allow them to continue on. Ever since I've started 13 years ago, we've always tried to work as hard in South Oklahoma City as we have in North Oklahoma City. Of course, it wasn't until we were able to hand, hire Anna, who is Hispanic, her, she speaks the language, she lives in South Oklahoma City, that we were able to entrench ourselves as much as we are now. And I really applaud Pete White for kind of pushing that forward, and for all of you for, for following that up and allowing us to keep that money, so we can continue to be more involved on South Side. At this point, we have an office on the South Side, Anna has, is there three days a week, and in our office two days a week. We are very entrenched in two grade schools there. We've done a lot of programs, we've rehabbed over seven homes on the South Side in the last two years. 56 people have graduated from our seven-week Neighborhood Leaders for today. Of, of that, 19 of them live on the South Side. So we've been purposely trying to recruit people from South Side to participate, as well as we make a commitment in our office that we hold at least half of our own workshops somewhere on the South Side, so that we're even forcing people from North Oklahoma City to drive to South Side in order to get some of our programs. We really enjoy partnering with you, and we thank you very, very much for continuing that partnership. Thank you.
Thanks for your outreach, Georgie. All right, are we ready to vote the consent docket? We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. That brings us to the concurrence docket.
Do you want consideration?
All right, we have a motion and a second on the concurrence. Any comments or questions here?
Yeah.
Huh?
I don't suppose it's too, is it too late to vote on something on the consent docket separately?
Yes, we can rescind the action.
I'm sorry. Just for the record, I would have voted against the $500,000 if I would have thought about it in time.
Okay.
Okay, concurrence, oh. I just, a question about, oh, the $4.5 million for the Convention Center acquisition project, support acquisition project.
Yes, this is an allocation of $4.5 million from the downtown TIF program to acquire property in the vicinity of the new Convention Center site. So we made a presentation to council several weeks ago about it. It's the area immediately south of where the Convention Center is going to be built, and along the east side of the Convention Center. It does not include the location of the Convention Center Hotel, the proposed Convention Center Hotel, and it is designed to acquire that property for either possibly private redevelopment or for public parking.
This is where the parking, the surface parking lot is when you showed us a couple weeks ago?
No, actually, I think the surface parking lot that you're thinking of is in the expansion area for the Convention Center.
Right, okay, so this is.
This is, this is further south from that.
Okay.
South and then east. If you recall from the diagrams, Broadway is going to be relocated further to the east, so it will be the strip of property that's on the east side of the relocated Broadway.
Okay. And do we already own some in this, this area?
Yes, we do already own some property in the area. The city, the city acquired some parcels that were part of the Convention Center acquisition because we don't typically split parcels. If there's a, if there's a big piece and it happens, part of the boundary spills over, we'll do a truing up. I think we talked about that when I made the presentation to council about the TIF allocation. At some point, we'll go through and figure out what's in the MAPS III boundary, you know, for the street, the Convention Center, what's on the east side of the boundary that'll be for public parking or private redevelopment.
So have you done appraisals, or how did you come up with?
Yeah, all the appraisals have been completed, and it's the usual process that we do when we acquire property for the city. We make a fair market value offer, we negotiate, most of the time, we reach an agreement on price through negotiations. From time to time, we do have to use eminent domain.
Okay.
But it's been very rare lately.
And, and why do we feel like Okura needs to own it?
Mostly because we don't really know what's going to be private development and what's going to be public development, and the Urban Renewal Authority is the only entity that can acquire property for private redevelopment and use eminent domain if it becomes necessary. And we can also acquire property for public uses as well, and we just have more flexibility.
And so what, what public use could you see coming from it?
I see most of it being public parking.
But parking could also be developed privately.
Right, and it may be that eventually COTBA ends up buying some of the property from Urban Renewal, or we, we just, the city decides to just give it to them as a way to, you know, provide public parking in the area.
Okay. Public parking for the Convention Center, or for?
I like to.
Put it in the park.
I like to think of it as an area, yeah, the park, the Convention Center, the arena.
Okay.
There's a lot of demand generators just in that area.
All right, anything else? All right, ready to vote the concurrence? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Brings us on to item nine. These are items that require a separate vote, and we'll start with a series of zoning cases. The first is in Ward Two at 11221 North University Avenue. It's currently our one single family, and it would move to our two medium-low residential. Ed?
Did anybody sign up to speak? This passed planning commission unanimously, no protest, I move for approval.
All right, any comments or questions from anyone on this item? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A2 has already been deferred until July 19th. That's A2 deferred for two weeks. That's A2 deferred for two weeks. Item 9A3 is a zoning case in Ward Six at 2842 Northwest 11th Street. It's currently our one single-family residential, and it would be put into a new simplified plan unit development. Meg?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I see that the applicant is here. Jeff, do you want to tell us a little bit about the project?
My name is Jeff Struble, 1916 Northwest 18th Street. This is a piece Bobby's facet for a long time, along May Avenue, trying to figure out what to do with it, and we decided to try to make it multifamily. It had a nice brick structure with a front duplex and a back duplex. So kind of from the front, it'll look like just a single-family house. And so it's going to be a nice little three-plex. Then have a unit upstairs also. The neighborhood is... We've talked with several times, and they're really excited about seeing some nice new construction on May.
Thank you. This passed the Planning Commission unanimously, subject to the technical evaluations, which I know you've agreed to, and that involved removing on-street parking on 11th Street from the issue.
Right.
And that's all been added into the documentation, so I would move approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. We're voting on item 9A3. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, good luck. Item 9A4 is also in Ward Six at 25 East Park Place. It's our four general residential, and it would be put into a new SPOD if approved. Meg?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is to relocate the OGNE substation that's right on the corner of 10th and Oklahoma, back onto Park Place. Freezes up a great corner on 10th Street. This passed Planning Commission unanimously. There were no protests. Has anybody signed up, Francis, to speak? I would move approval.
Second.
All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A5 is also a zoning case, and this would be amending a master design statement, and this is in Ward Four. Pete, you okay with this?
Yes, I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, first, we'll need to vote on the amendment. Do you have a motion on item 9B1?
Yes, I move the amendment.
Okay. Before we vote, is there anyone in the room who hopes to speak on this item? All right, we're voting then first on the amendment. Item passes unanimously. And then Pete, you want to make a motion on 9B2?
Yes, I move the ordinance.
All right, cast your votes, and it passes unanimously as well. Item 9C is a parking issue in Ward Six on Southwest 7th Street. Meg?
Yes, Mayor, this is related to the MAPS Downtown Park. I would move approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. We're voting on item 9C. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9D is an item that's being introduced today. And a public hearing set for two weeks from today.
And Jason's going to explain this to us. Has two spokesies.
Good morning, Mayor and council. Yeah, the item you have this morning in front of you is an amendment to Chapter 60 of the municipal code, which is the general schedule of fees. So with approval of the amendment, it would actually repeal Chapter 60-2-3, which is the fees for the Spokeys Bike Share Program. As you'll recall, when the Spokeys Bike Share Program was originally established, the Office of Sustainability was actually managing that program, so the fees for the Bike Share Program were added to the general schedule. Since 2014, COTPA has actually been managing and administering that Bike Share Program. And so with approval of this ordinance change, it's recommended that COTPA would then have the ability to be able to adjust fares as necessary, fees for the Bike Share Program moving forward. So if this item is approved, what we're looking at is actually transitioning the Bike Share fee structure from more of a membership basis to more of a transit basis, where there's transit passes involved rather than maybe monthly memberships, minor tweaks and adjustments. And again, if it's approved, we would move forward with those changes to the fare structure around August when we implement or launch the new bikes and equipment for the program. So we're looking forward to that. The other thing I wanted to advise council about is that we are also in the process of selecting a consultant to help us look at our fares system-wide for transit. Part of that analysis will not only, you know, look at the fares, but will also look at the fare collection methods as well as a different type of passes. So one of the things we want to look at is are there ways to develop transit passes that will account for multiple modes? So one of the passes we're interested in looking at is a possibility of a bike and bus pass. So again, by allowing COTPA to have some discretion and flexibility to establish those fees and fares, we think it'll be more effective in integrating it with transit. Be glad to answer any other questions.
How successful is the bike program, and what kind of revenue is it generating?
So the program actually generates about $35,000 in revenue from just the, you know, normal Bike Share fees. In addition to that, we have been fortunate enough over the past two years to secure $50,000 sponsorships from Blue Cross Blue Shield. So in that regard, it does generate some revenue. One of the things that I think is impressive about the system is that, as we know, the system's been in place for several years now. The bikes have deteriorated. They are not exactly the type of bikes you would typically find in a Bike Share Program. So even with about half the bikes that we started with, our trips are holding their own. In fact, in this last year, we provided about 7,000 trips with our Bike Share Program. We're on pace to finish at about 7,700. Now, that is down about 5% from the previous year, but again, we have about half the bikes in the system that we had last year. So there's definitely interest. People are using it, and very fortunate for the sponsorship in relationship with Blue Cross Blue Shield, very helpful in keeping that going.
Thank you.
Pete's been talking about for all the five years I've been here about kids getting free transit for education, those going to school. Is the consultant going to look at that particular question?
Yeah. Yeah, that'll be part of it. You know, basically, he'll look, or he, she, the firm, will look at all of the fares we charge, including any type of special programs, which we currently have the Hall Pass Program, we have the Road Scholars Program, we have different special event rates we do for spokesies if a large group wants to charter a group of bikes, so to speak. So all that will be incorporated. And again, one of the things we're looking forward to with that fare analysis is being able to look at fares to capture multiple modes.
Did you... Go ahead, Pete.
That leads me to something. I wasn't really going to talk about it, but it's my understanding that there's some consideration about giving free rides on the streetcar. And the idea that we would give free rides on the streetcar and charge high school kids who don't have the dime or the quarter to pay is revolting to me. I'm... It troubles me greatly. I mean, the streetcar is like a Cadillac, and a bus is like a Ford. But we're going to give a free pass on the Cadillac, and it's taken me, what, three years to even get this as a reasonable conversation about kids? Four years? That's... I take that... That's for the people in Oklahoma City that depend on public transportation. I'd be insulted by that.
I think you've been misinformed. I don't think we've talked about giving free rides on the streetcar only.
It was... They talked about for a startup.
That makes it worse. That makes it worse. Because of the streetcar, we're now going to give free rides on the buses? I mean, what is this about? What is this about? I mean, the streetcar, we're going to give... We have a Cadillac that we know can't pay for itself, doesn't go anywhere, but we're going to give you a free ride on it, and in order to salve the conscience of everybody, we're going to now give free rides on the buses? And I've been fighting for, what, three or four years to get high school kids the opportunity to ride the bus free, and it's been turned down like they got to have money? Well, what about the people going to ride the damn streetcar? I mean, it... I find it offensive. I mean, I'm offended by the whole idea of free rides on the streetcar, that forcing free rides for the buses, when I compare that to the fight I've been in for three years to get... I've said it five times. I do that every time.
With...
It's not your fault. Don't take it personal.
With regards to...
It's David's fault. He did this.
I do believe the fare analysis we're conducting, we are going to conduct, we'll look at that thoroughly. And really, when we have talked about the potential for free rides, and nothing's been decided yet, but free rides on the streetcar, it is being looked at now just on a temporary basis, so nothing permanently.
The conversation about it was the match that lit this fuse. So don't take it personal. I just think we've got to reestablish priorities that make sense over the long run. The whole purpose, well, not the whole purpose, but one of the purposes in getting and giving these kids an opportunity to give them some mobility so they get out of their neighborhood, they can experience the Oklahoma City that you and I experience.
That's right.
But the other purpose is if it would... It should hopefully break down that barrier about riding a bus so that we would become more bus user... Easier to use the bus, therefore make public transportation work better. Maybe... I have thought for a long time that nothing good will come from the streetcar. Maybe I was wrong. Maybe we'll get free bus rides for high school kids. That'll offset that $130 million boondoggle.
Jason, at COTPA on Friday, did you do the preliminary service level assumptions for the streetcar? Was that presented or...
Yes, we... The COTPA Board of Trustees took action to issue an RFP for a streetcar operations and maintenance contractor.
For a turnkey?
For a turnkey operation. And we didn't get into, and it hasn't been determined exactly what the service profile will be. We're still seeking stakeholder input, policymaker input. But at the same time, in order to develop the RFP, we had to come up with a general or an estimated service profile in order to determine the annual service hours that the proposers would be bidding on. So yeah, that was included with the RFP.
So it hasn't been decided what this potential service level...
Yeah. No, I mean, as far as, you know, to be able today to say it's going to start at this time in the morning and end at this time in the evening, those haven't been determined. We can say it's, you know, based on the hours that we have in the RFP, it's going to start pretty early, sometime between 5:00 and 7:00 a.m., and it's going to run pretty late, sometime between, you know, 10:00 to 2:00 a.m., depending on the day. But none of those things have really been finalized.
Okay. But that's... I mean, that gives a... So with like 10 to 14-minute frequencies?
Right. 10 to 14-minute frequencies. Again, do you look at doing 10 minutes all day, or do you do 10-minute frequencies during the peak and maybe 14 minutes during the off-peak? So all those things we're still looking at.
And that level of service would cost $3.5 to $4 million a year to operate?
That's right.
Okay.
All right, Jason, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, do we have a motion on item 9D?
Yes.
All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9E is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9E? All right, how about a motion?
Move the item.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 9F is a public hearing regarding a dilapidated structure in an HP district, and it's in Ward Six. Meg?
Charles, what did we find out about the house closing or the sale of this property?
Well, they do have a contract, but there's no closing date in sight. It's from my understanding, they have some IRS problems with the property.
IRS problems with the property?
That's what the son told us.
Okay. Well...
I guess the IRS has leans on it from what we understand.
Take it away from the... Yeah, I'm not sure that would be such a good idea. The structure is in bad shape. I don't deny that. So I'm very reluctantly going to say let's leave it on, but would you continue to try to work with the owner and see if we can get the property sold? Because it was my understanding that the purchaser wanted to rehab it.
Yes, we've been in touch with the son over the last few weeks about this.
Okay. Well, would you please continue to keep that dialogue going?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. So given those circumstances, I will move approval.
All right. I think we need to vote on these two items separate. So 9F1 is the current motion on the floor. We'll cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Now, Meg, you want to make a motion on 9F2?
Yes, I made a motion on 9F2, reluctantly.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9G is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9G? All right, is there a motion?
Move the item.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9H is a public hearing regarding abandoned buildings. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9H?
Move the item.
All right, cast your votes on this list, and it passes unanimously. Item 9I is a public hearing regarding removal of properties from the abandoned building list. Is there a motion here?
Move the item.
Anyone here hope to speak on item 9I? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And item 9J is a resolution that would name the upcoming MAPS III I-44 trail, the Will Rogers Trail. It goes through Wards One, Two, and Six. Any comments or questions here? All right, cast your votes.
I don't have a... It's not... That's not on my ward, and Will Rogers is a great... Brings a great amount of fame and approval to the state of Oklahoma, but how many things do you name after the same people? It seems to me that, you know, we have an airport named after them. We have a park, one of our best parks, the airport. I hate to be anti-Will Rogers here, but it just seems to me that a little more...
I agree. In my mind, I wasn't at the meeting when they did this. I think because of the park is the reason they wanted them...
Right.
The trail goes through the park.
Goes through the park.
And so in a sense, you're naming it after the park as opposed to naming it after the person, it kind of seems to me.
Well, I just... As much as Stanley Draper did for Oklahoma City, I mean, somebody drank the Kool-Aid at one time. I mean, we named the lake, the road around the lake, the expressway. I mean, the park is named for a different Draper. I grew up thinking it wasn't, but it was named for a different... A man named Draper that lived... Was the original homestead on that park. But I just... There are so many people in Oklahoma City that have contributed so much that it just... I just...
In this sense, I think the trail needs to imply, though, which trail it is and where does it go.
Okay.
Right. You're thinking in your mind, oh, it goes through Will Rogers Park. Okay, I know where that trail is.
Okay.
And naming after a person, you know, you wouldn't know where it was.
Right.
So I think this is helpful in that regard. It reminds me, though, of, you know, you think of Hefner. Well, you have a mayor and some state Supreme Court judge named Hefner, and they named the lake after him. Well, then, the street was named, and then, you know, the middle school was named, and all of that was because of the lake. And so they originally named the lake, and now think how many things have been named Hefner because of that lake and that indirect connection to the mayor. An overholser, a very similar type of thing. A lot of things get named after the lake, which was named after a person.
Right.
And that's kind of what this says.
Right. Okay.
All right. Have I talked you into it?
I don't want to... Well, I don't want to make a test of fellowship out of it.
It could be against Will Rogers.
No, 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 no. I just think that... Well, it's good to... If no one else was educated by your comments, I was, and I appreciate it. But I still think we ought to think about things like that when we do them. I mean, they just, there are so many people we could honor that have contributed so much specifically to Oklahoma City that somehow or other we don't get around to doing that, it seems like.
Mayor, Councilman McAtee and I both serve on that committee that where the name originated. And it was mainly, in part, to distinguish the fact that the trail is separate than I-44, and they needed to give it a name and the fact that it covers or goes through most of the park entered into it. But, Pete, you're going down a road that could create actual controversy when you start entering in each one of our favorite Oklahoma Cityans, you know, to attach their name to this, and this certainly did not have any controversy associated with it, so...
You could name things after people from Claremore all you want, and no one's...
Yeah, but seriously, it was designed to...
If I was concerned about avoiding that argument, we just named everything Stanley Draper. I'm not concerned about that. I mean, there's going to be people that love people and people that didn't approve of what they did, and that's some of what we're going to have to face, but...
Well, you'll get that opportunity as those trails continue to expand, you know, to change the name.
I just want people to think about it. I mean, I have a dear friend named Joe Carter who managed the Will Rogers Memorial for 250 years and only retired about a year ago. I had lunch with him last Friday, and I hope he wasn't watching today, because he thinks everything ought to be Will Rogers. I've always thought that all those sayings that you see that Will Rogers said, Joe probably wrote half of them, you know? Did Will Rogers say that? Nobody should have, and the next thing that comes out, he did say it, kind of like. Anyway, I'm not opposed to Will Rogers. I'm just, I just want to put some thought into how we go about naming things.
All right. Have we voted on that?
We have a motion.
All right. Well, we'll vote on it. Who likes Will Rogers? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. All right. Item K, claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under item K? All right. How about a motion then? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 10 is claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under item 10, claims recommended for approval? All right. How about a motion? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 11 is items from council. James, you have anything? All right. Ed?
I want to follow up on that conversation we just had about the streetcar and funding. One, because I know we're going to have, we're going to have council issue meetings about it in two weeks, and I'm not going to be there. Second, I know that there's some consideration to, if we were going to put something on the ballot in November, and I don't think we should, because I don't know that there's been enough power process, but if we were, I think that would have to come next month. So, just a word about funding. And there were, right before I took office, Sam Bowman and Craig Freeman, and they had a whole task force on different funding mechanisms available to the city, and they did a lot of work. And then, it just, I didn't, it didn't go anywhere from there, but I'd like to potentially revisit that. And the reason, some of what Jason's saying when we talked about the streetcar, still, I feel some fear when I hear that. If you are talking about a level of service in which you're going from 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m., basically 24 hours a day, every 10 to 14 minutes, six days a week, $3.5 to $4 million, I think if you had the money, you'd still have one of the highest levels of discrepancy of service between the streetcar and the bus of any city in America. But I think we all know, we don't have the $3.5 to $4 million a year to run the streetcar, and we don't have the money for the park either. But in terms of the streetcar, I mean, I think with some urgency, since we're going to start building it this year, we have to figure out what the implications of that are. And when you guys talk about this in two weeks, I would hope that maybe staff, I know that there's a council issue summary that's been given to us, but I would hope that staff maybe would revisit, I asked Kenny, I've been talking about this for four years, the possibility of a Title VI challenge to what we're doing. And I asked Kenny for an opinion, which he wrote on March 5, 2013, so more than three years ago now. Kenny said, you have to look at the situation as it gets proposed, but there is a risk of a Title VI challenge or a Title VI lawsuit. So, now we have the numbers to fill in to the equation, and knowing those numbers, maybe looking at the municipal councillor's opinion from a little over three years ago about what the risks are going forward. If you, even if you, if you receive federal funds, you have to, you can't have that level of discrepancy between a bus, which in my mind serves a higher percentage of minorities and poor than the streetcar will. And I'd love to be proved wrong. I'd love to be proved that the streetcar won't serve a higher percentage of Caucasians versus the bus, which in my mind has a higher percentage of African-Americans and Latinos. Somebody prove me wrong. I mean, I've been asking for four years, and nobody's ever offered any evidence to the contrary. And I assume that we do some demographic studies of our transit system, because we have to be in compliance with Title VI. But in two weeks, I won't be there, but if somebody could present that to me, show me that I'm wrong. Show me that there's not a Title VI vulnerability for us here. But in my mind, you're going to discriminate in terms of level of service against minorities, and that opens you up to a Title VI challenge. And I think that Kenny laid that out very clearly a little over three years ago. So, maybe we can revisit that in the meetings in a couple of weeks, and then, Jim, maybe we can meet...
Sure. You know, one of the things that Jason's doing is a rate study, and part of that is to make sure that we do have Title VI compliance. So, we are, there are some, I know you're talking about service and not rates, but there's multiple steps.
And I've talked to Jason many times. I know this is on Jason's radar, and just the fact that you're not going to have the streetcar on Sunday, like we don't have the buses on Sunday, and the idea that if you're going to have it free, you do it for the buses. So, somebody is, I think, thinking about it, which I appreciate. I'm just not sure that it's going to get us off the hook, because I don't know where that $3.5 to $4 million is going to come from. You're already going to build the highest level of discrepancy, I think, of any city in America between bus and streetcar. What happens if you have to pull from the buses some of that money, some of that $3.5 to $4 million? It's going, I mean, it's a slam dunk then, that we're vulnerable. So, I just ask that we revisit the municipal councillor's opinion from three years ago, plug in these numbers to what he was saying then, and then, look at funding. I'm not sure when we talk about a sales tax for MAPS for neighborhoods or sales tax for whatever, that we're not talking about solving these problems, which is maybe having a small percentage of it, an eighth of a cent for transit or an eighth of a cent for parks. I mean, have a dedicated funding source. That's what every other city in America that's building a streetcar has, is a dedicated funding source for transit. We're the only city in America that's trying to build a streetcar without a dedicated funding source. I think we're the only city in America without a regional transit authority. And I know we're the only city in America that we're paying for this with a sales tax as opposed to having federal funds help with the capital. So, we're an outlier, and there's a reason that we're an outlier. It's because it's risky. And so, just kind of revisit all this. I think, I would like, I should have done this a long time ago, because Sam Bowman put a lot of work into it, but they looked at a motor fuel sales tax for whatever. And I'm not, I'm not saying this at the time, but whether it was for a regional transit authority or something like this, or five or 10 years from now, what's obvious from the municipal councillor's office is, a motor fuel sales tax at the city level would be very complex, and it would take some coordination between Greg Freeman and the OTC and municipal councillor's office and just a lot of studies. So, I wonder if we could form a task force, which I think is where Sam Bowman was going five years ago, to just figure out the logistics of that. If you were going to do a gas sales tax for whatever purpose, how do you, how do you do that? What would it look like? To study the, here's what Kenny says, "Study the enactment of a possible Oklahoma City motor fuel tax code, which would be identical to the state's motor fuel tax code, except for the city rate, which could be determined during the study process." So, I just ask that we form that task force. Doesn't mean we're going to do it tomorrow, but just go ahead and figure out the logistics of, can the city even have a gas tax? And if it can have a gas tax, how do you do it? What would it look like? Maybe that's just, maybe that's part of a regional transit authority years from now, but go ahead and do the work. But I think we have to figure out, where is this $3.5 to $4 million going to come from? I mean, we're building it this year, and it cannot come from lowering bus service, or it's going to be challenged in the court. I feel very confident that a Title VI lawsuit will come if level of service to the buses is diverted to try and find that $3.5 to $4 million. So, I just, I hope we can think, process all that over the next two weeks, and then have good discussions two weeks from now, and then hopefully, Jim, you and I can talk when I get back. Thanks.
Okay. Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a little bit of history. I also was on that task force that Councilman Shidib is talking about, and the whole nexus of it seemed to evaporate into the fact that the only thing the group would come up with is we needed a tax increase, and the group was unwilling to put that forward at that time. So, a little bit of history on that. Had the opportunity last week to go to Kansas City with Councilman Pettis, to the National League of Cities. There are four items of interest that I'd just like to briefly share with you. The first is something that I did not know was going on, and that is that the Department of Labor has passed some new regulations regarding overtime and when to pay overtime, and that is going to require quite a bit of planning on the shoulders of all businesses to make sure they comply with that. There are some unintended consequences possibly involved in that, so that was also mentioned. Then, the marketplace fairness, the internet purchases tax, the consensus from the staff of NLC seem to be that don't expect that this year. The Congress is about to go into recess. Following recess, they'll be back for the election, and then, there'll be a lame duck session. And the forecast was that the marketplace fairness is dead until next legislative session. That was just their forecast. There was quite a bit of interest in tax reform. I thought tax reform was going to be involved in redoing our overall tax structure, simplifying it, changing the way we charge income tax on the federal level. Tax reform to the participants at the meeting last week was protect muni, bond-free interest on municipal bonds. So, you can take that wherever you want to go. And then, we've talked quite a bit today about infrastructure and transportation. If misery likes company, you've got good company, because every city seems to be crying out for infrastructure needs and transportation dollars. There's just only so many dollars to go around. It was a great meeting, and really enjoyed going and hearing the perspectives of the other cities. Thank you, Your Honor.
Larry, can I ask you a question? The opposition to the marketplace fairness, is it along party lines? Is it partisan? Or is it, is opposition bipartisan? Or what has to happen to get us there?
It's along all those lines, including a new one, which I did not realize, constitutionality. Is it constitutionally legal to do what we're trying to do in the marketplace fairness? So, there are different pockets of opposition, all as you've articulated there, and the whole result of that has kind of got a quagmire, the thing has stalled. That's my assessment.
I think marketplace fairness is bipartisan in its support and bipartisan in its opposition. I mean, it breaks down more on the states or municipalities dependence on sales tax. I mean, the states like Oklahoma that are hugely dependent on it, of course, we can't get one of our legislators to be for it, but the cities and the local governments are for it. In places where they don't depend on sales tax, where they get a big piece of the Avalorum or whatever, there's not, they oppose it because, and it used to depend on where the big box online realtors were located. That's kind of started to deteriorate when people like Amazon have come over, and some of the bigger, much larger companies like that have said, we're willing to play. It's gone back to more, in my opinion, more whether sales tax is a key factor to financing your operations or not.
So, all the Oklahoma representatives are against it?
Not against it, not against it, but they haven't lined up for it. I mean, we have some indication there that we have a vote or two, but no indication any of them are willing to sign on as sponsors on the bill. Is that fair?
Yeah, that's probably right.
Because that would solve our streetcar and park deficiencies. I mean, that would solve a lot of things, but...
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
I missed something on item 9B. 9B is, was the case where the, there's going to be a mini storage facility built at 44th and South Robinson. And I intended to say that we probably should wreck some kind of a memorial there. The original South Side Mafia was founded on that location. There used to be a place there called Alamo Plaza Courts. It was a gigantic motel back when motor, when motels were really motels. They served the traveling public. And there's one in Oklahoma City and one in San Antonio, was on Old Highway 77. There were two, there was, there were some large rooms and some regular tourist-type rooms, but in the far northwest corner of that motel, there were a suite that was right on the corner. They permanently rented those two suites and joined them together. And if you'll think about it, back when the South Side Mafia was formed in the '50s, there wasn't, liquor was not legal. So, it was kind of a safe place to imbibe and play poker, and its original members read like a who's who of South Oklahoma City. That, and I just think maybe, I might talk to the owners and see if I can't get them to put up a granite obliques maybe out there and talk about J.D. McCarty and Bill Bishop, all the people that met regularly. They called, they met on Wednesday night, and they called it choir practice. It's a piece of South Oklahoma City history that, if I don't tell it now and somebody doesn't remember it, it'll probably go unrecalled. Anyway, a lot more to the story, but it was right there in that motel, back when it was a thriving motel on Highway 77. Anyway...
All right. David?
Mayor, in addition to getting to visit all the, or many of the parks this weekend, we took the bus downtown, and I was surprised, one, how full it was, both coming downtown and going back out, and then, secondly, because I don't encounter this when I ride it during the week, because during the week, it's coming to work and going to work, and most everybody on the bus is in a similar mode. But on the weekends, it was surprising how many people had large shopping bags and, you know, depend upon public transportation to get them back and forth for just traditional shopping. And in the case of Route 16, that means you have to go and utilize another line to go to a particular store, you know, whether it's Walmart or a grocery store or something else, because it's just, you just don't encounter one on Route 16. Anyway, my question is, because I know we have incentives available for retail, and I was talking with John and Mark this morning, we've got some efforts to bring in retail in certain areas that without incentives, it just won't happen. But if we could look at that to see if these areas, not in the core part of downtown, but adjacent to it, where it's an economically depressed area in all quadrants, it's not limited to one area of the city, to see if anything could be done. Now, we may find that, you know, Walmart and these other stores have no interest of coming into these areas, and that's fine if they don't. They don't. But see if, what would it take to get additional retail centers like a Walmart or something similar to that type of store in these economically depressed areas? And then, we would just make sure that they happen to be on a particular bus line, if we could interest them in coming into these depressed areas.
David, do you mean incentivize, to put things along transit lines?
Yeah, and not just transit lines, but transit lines in depressed areas, you know? Because you know what happens? I think we've got an efficient system today if you're just coming from one stop and coming downtown, and that's your end destination point. I do that. It's very easy for me to come to work and go home to work. I think our spoke system works fine. It's when you need to change routes, because you're looking at a minimum an hour one way, sometimes an hour and a half or so. I understand that we're very limited on what we can do with our bus system. We just don't have the facilities, the funding, to do anything other than the spoke and wheel. That's okay. Let's see, given those limitations, what can we do to entice people to help, you know, the economically disadvantaged individuals? I will say, developments that are on the horizon, like the Wheeler District, are going to go a long way to overcoming some of the, just the impression people have about certain parts of the city. So, I'm really looking forward to hearing more about the Wheeler District and want to see that really come to fruition. Larry, you... Larry, you mentioned about the reluctance of people voting for tax increases. I think that's an issue at all levels of government, and I think that's been a problem in Oklahoma. People don't have the courage, elected officials don't have the courage to analyze a system, see what is necessary. And if a tax increase is necessary, have the courage to go out and promote it, but not just promote it, but educate the people that they represent as to why it's important, why without that type of an increase, we will be left behind. It's, you know, it's like anything. You get what you put into something. And if we're not willing to fund basic governmental services, then we need to be prepared to accept the consequences of that, which, among other things, is a lack of interest from businesses outside of the state or municipality to relocate or to put a large section of their business in that particular state or city. If you're not going to provide, if you're not going to properly fund basic government services, then you've got to accept the consequences. We don't have enough elected officials to have the courage to go out and explain that to the people that elected them. It is so easy just to not bring up the topic, turn the other way, and say, "I'll never vote for a tax increase." Well, do that, and we will be left behind further and further. Fortunately, we can't get below 50. You know, there's 50 states, and that's going to be our endpoint. But until we start electing people who have courage to, one, do the proper analysis, then, secondly, begin to promote what needs to occur to improve this state, this city, and then take the time to go out, educate people. Just the recent elections that we had, we saw so many people had nothing to do with the office they were running for. For example, court, county clerk saying, "I'm opposed to taxes, tax increases." And they'll get elected, you know, just on that statement. I'm sorry.
Meg?
Speaking of county clerk and other elections, I did request this by some messages on Twitter, but would the candidates please remove their signs from all over the city of Oklahoma City? They are everywhere at every intersection, some specific offenders. But please, everybody, remove your signs. The elections are over. I want to congratulate and thank the Oklahoma City Philharmonic for their free concert out at State Fair Park on the Fourth of July. It was absolutely fantastic despite the looming clouds. People stayed. The music was beautiful, and the fireworks were just extraordinary. And speaking of Wheeler District, the Ferris wheel is open to the public, up and running. Ribbon cutting this afternoon, I think about 5:30. But people used it this weekend. Some of the video is just spectacular. And I thought Steve Leichmeyer's piece was interesting where he says, "From 100 feet up, as you look out over the city, you can really understand how this development along the river, the Wheeler District, west side of downtown, is all coming together, pulled together and by our boulevard," which is one of my favorite comments. So, thank you, Mayor.
All right.
Meg, before you leave, I do hope that people that do ride the Ferris wheel do not solely look out across the river and towards downtown. It's a great view. They really should look at that. But look out to the south and to the east and the southwest and all parts of the city. And you get a sense as to how big and how great the city is. But don't concentrate solely on downtown. Sorry.
All right. John?
I just got to stick up for Warren Six.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On my way to church on Sunday morning, I saw our mayor on national TV with the mayor of Baltimore, talking about the U.S. Conference of Mayors. So, Mr. Mayor, you did a great job. Also, I would like to publicly wish KD the best. I would give a sermon about that, but Councilman White's given several sermons this morning, so I will not give a sermon on that, but wish KD the best.
All right. Mark?
I want to echo John's comments. And to Kevin Duran, I want to personally thank him for eight years. Wonderful memories, just great memories. And I'm very, very sad he's leaving, but the memories he gave me and my family, they are outstanding.
Thanks. All right. City manager reports?
There is a sales tax collections report on the agenda for June. It was not good. June was down 7.7%. We ended the year down $4 million below last year and $9 million below projections. But, I mean, it's close to, we finished about where we were going. Obviously, the last month was not good. We did on Friday get the indication on the July sales tax check, and it's 1.4% below last year. So still below last year. The 1.4 is obviously much better than 7.7, so it's, it's maybe not as bad as we'd hoped for.
All right. Citizens to be heard? Looks like we're 0 for 3. All right. We'll adjourn the meeting then. Thanks, everybody.